We'd like to call this special school board meeting of July 31, 2023 to order. The time is 5:05 PM. The purpose of today's meeting is to hold a public hearing to consider the adoption of the 2023-2024 tentative millage rates and the 2023-2024 tentative budget. At this time, we request that all cellular telephones be put in silent mode. We would like to take this opportunity to remind the members of the public of the district's mission, which is to ensure each student achieves his or her highest personal potential, and the district's vision to be a world-class system. Today's agenda includes a presentation on the percent of increase over the rollback rate, proposed millage, budget overview, and the proposed 2024 tentative budget. Also, we'll have a public hearing on the proposed millage rates and tentative budget, and we'll have public comment at that time. Then we'll have adoption of the required local effort millage, basic discretionary millage, capital outlay millage, resolution determining revenues and millages, and resolution adopting the tentative millage rates for the fiscal year 2023 and 2024. The fiscal year 24 tentative budget and related resolution adopting the tentative budget, the acceptance of the 2023 certification of taxable value, scheduling of the final budget public hearing. Then we'll have comments from board members, board attorney, and superintendent. Board members, is there a motion to adopt the agenda presented? Mr. Fisher does the motion. Is there a second? Langford Fleming, please record your vote.
Yes.
Okay.
Thank you.
The motion passes 5-0 for the agenda. I will now turn the meeting over to Dr. Christopher Benir, Superintendent, Dr. Amy Decimores, Chief Financial Officer, and Mrs. Kelly Letcher, Director of Budget. Dr. Benir?
Mr. Chairman, members of the public, a lot of work gone in to get to this point for a tentative budget in the public hearing. Want to just recognize the work that Dr. Amy Decimores, our Chief Financial Officer, and Kelly Letcher, her Director of Budget, have accomplished. They don't do all of this alone. They may be the two sitting at the podium presenting to you tonight, but there have been multiple conversations across various departments, various divisions, in order to get us to this point. I'd like to recognize their work and the work of the other chiefs and other members of the staff who get us to this point, but I will turn it over to Dr. Decimores at this point to begin her presentation.
Thank you, Dr. Benir, members of the board. This hearing is the first of two public hearings required under Florida statutes to give the public an opportunity to provide input into the proposed millage levy and the budget for this fiscal year. The superintendent submitted his proposed tentative budget to you on July 24. This hearing was advertised in the news press on July 28. The second and final budget public hearing, by your approval this evening, will be held on Wednesday, September 6, at 5:05 here in our boardroom. And the notice of that meeting to the public will be through a direct mailing from the property appraiser's office. That mailed document that is known as the TRIM notice is sent as required by law.
So, the first thing that we are required to discuss is the millage rollback rate. The rollback rate is the rate in which applied to the current year's tax roll, net of adjustments for new growth, would produce the same dollars as received in the previous year. The calculated rollback rate is 4.8844 mils. The proposed rate for the 23-24 school year is 5.430 mils, a decrease of .127 mils from the 22-23 millage rate of 5.557 mils, and an increase of 11.17% from the rollback rate. This new millage rate will generate an additional $41.9 million from the previous year because of the increase in the tax roll. I just wanted to point out that the required local effort portion is 59% of the total One of the things we like to point out is the change in the rollback rate from year to year. So, we have a graph here that shows that. As you can see, the tax roll this year is $145 billion, and our required local effort portion is 3.164. We also have a prior period adjustment. I apologize, it's really .018. That 1 shouldn't be in that graph. I apologize for that, for a total required local effort of 3.182. We also request that you levy a .748 discretionary millage and 1.5 capital mils, which is the total 5.430 mils. As you can see in the breakdown here from year to year, we are down, the millage is a negative .127 from the previous year, as I said earlier. As the millage rate goes down from year to year, that's because the tax roll goes up from year to year. So, as the tax roll goes up, our millage rate will go down. You are required to do the required local effort portion, and where most taxing authorities can do the same amount, same millage rate every year and keep generating, we are given the amount for our required local effort from the state, and you must levy that in order to participate in the Florida Education Finance Program. The effect on the taxpayers for this year with the millage rate that we're proposing, if the tax roll was an 8.34% increase, so for a taxpayer that had a $100,000 home, that new value is $108,340. At last year's rate, they would have paid $555.70. At the new rate, they'll pay $588.29, so they'll have a $32.59 increase in their tax roll, tax rate. If you look at the bottom portion, the bottom portion are the homeowners that have their home state exemption and the Save Our Homes. The Save Our Homes only allows them to increase by 3% a year, so their value would go from $100,000 to $103,000. When you apply the home state exemption to that, their rate last year would have been $416.78. This year would be $423.54, so they would only see an increase of $6.76. The millage amounts, the required local effort portion, will generate $443,197.701. So, I just want to point out also that while that does generate more than it did last year on the required local effort portion, as that goes up, our state funding goes down in the same amount. So, we will not generate any additional dollars from the required local effort than what the state says we can do through the Florida Education Finance Program. However, under the basic discretionary, we will generate $104,183,495.
$104 million.
$104 million. Keep doing that. And in the capital outlay, we will generate $208,924,120. So, we will generate a total of $756,305,316 from our total millage. So, the tentative budget breaks down. It's the total budget that we're proposing tonight is $2.4 billion. It breaks down to the general fund of $1.1 billion, or 47% of the total budget. The capital is $876 million, or 36%, and then it breaks down into those other sections that are much smaller. So, the budget is, each budget fund is earmarked for specific purposes. The general fund is for the basic operating expenses. That pays for our teachers and a majority of our staff. The debt service pays for the debt for our capital, our buildings, and capital is used to build new schools, buy equipment, provide the maintenance that it takes to maintain our schools and our buildings. Food service, of course, supports the breakfast and lunch program for all of our students. The special revenue includes the federal funds. Those are dollars that come in from the federal government. That could be IDEA, Title I, Title IV, all of those, and they have specific purposes that we must use those funds for. Internal service accounts, that's what we pay for our insurance, both our health and property insurance. The general fund is our major source of revenue. It's budgeted at about $1 billion, 47% of the total budget, and it will support over 100,000 students next year. The general fund focuses on resources to our classrooms, reading initiatives at the elementary level. We're going to continue the additional 30 minutes at select elementary and middle schools. We focus on the whole child, both the mental wellness of each of the children, on our ELL English learning students, and providing additional interventions and supports to recapture the learning loss that we've had in the last couple of years, as well as focusing on employee retention. The Florida Education Finance Program, we've talked about that a little bit in the last couple of meetings. It's $932 million in total FFP revenue. There's $42 million of that that will be going to the Family Empowerment Scholarships. It's a $77 million increase over the previous year, and $7.5 million of that, sorry, is for the teacher salary increase allocation. We will be receiving about $8,933 per FTE. The base student allocation is $5,139.73, which is an increase of $552.33, and we are funded by the state 42% of the amount. So, as you can see, the breakdown of the different revenues, local is 60.92, the state is 38.59, and federal is .49. Where does the money go when it comes in? 69% of the budget goes to instruction or direct school expenses, 6% into transportation, 12% into operations, and then 4% into support services and contingencies and reserves at 8%. So, our contingencies and reserves, the reserves protect us during any kind of financial situation that may occur. We hold a 3% reserve back in the budget for any kind of contingency that may come up, as well as we have some money set aside for future reductions that may come through the prorations. As you know, last week, we discussed we've had our first proration already, and any additional needs that come up throughout the year. The food service budgeted is at $71.8 million, and as I said before, that includes breakfast and lunch for every child at no cost to parents. The community eligibility program is in effect for all schools for FY '24. Special revenue is our Title I, our IDEA, and other federal grants, and that's currently budgeted at $67.6 million. This will continue to increase as the funding comes in from the federal government. Capital funds are currently budgeted $877 million. Our main source is local property taxes and sales tax, and our major focus is safety and security at our schools, maintenance and renovations of our existing buildings and technology. The five-year plan will be coming to you all shortly from the Operations Department. Debt services is currently budgeted at $94.7 million. At the different levels, we have a statutory debt level that we're required to keep, and that's at 15.2%. We can't exceed more than 50%, 75% of our capital outlay millage. And then the recommended debt service, which is what the board has recommended, that we don't go above 50% of that. We're at 22.8% right now of that. The budget that we're presenting will support 121 schools, support over 100,000 students. It supports the initiatives of the state, the district's vision and mission, and it's centered on student and staff safety, student achievement, and envision 2030.
Sure. So, with that, we respectfully submit this budget in support of our mission, the students and the employees of Lee County School District, and the citizens of Lee County. And you see before you and on the agenda, the actions tonight that we are asking the board to take, or the superintendent will be recommending for the board to take, including the adoption of all proposed millages, the adoption of the tentative budget, and all resolutions associated, as well as the recommendation for a final public hearing in September.
Thank you. The next item on our agenda is the public hearing. We will now recess this special school board meeting and open a public hearing to consider the adoption of the tentative proposed millage rates and tentative budget for 2023, I'm sorry, 2023 and 2024. Dr. Benir, please continue by stating your recommendations.
Mr. Chairman, members of the public, fellow board members, recommendation number one. Recommendation is that the Lee County School Board adopt the 2023-2024 tentative proposed required local effort millage of $3.182 mils, with a proposed amount to be raised of $443,197,701. The RLE millage includes basic RLE, required local effort, of 3.164, and a prior adjustment millage of .018. Recommendation number two, it's recommended that the Lee County School Board adopt the 2023-2024 tentative proposed discretionary millage of .748 mils, with a proposed amount to be raised of $104,183,495. Recommendation number three is recommended that the Lee County School Board adopt the 2023-2024 tentative proposed capital outlay millage of $1.500, with a proposed amount to be raised of $208,924,120. The total millage will equal 5.43 mils, with the total amount to be raised of $756,305,316. The total millage rate to be levied is more than the rollback rate. It is an increase of the rollback rate of 11.17%. Recommendation number four, we recommend that the Lee County School Board adopt the resolution determining revenues and millages levied, and the resolution adopting the tentative millage rates for the fiscal year of 2023-2024. Recommendation number five, the recommendation is that the Lee County School Board adopt the tentative budget and related resolution adopting the tentative budget for the 2023-2024 school year as follows. General operating in the amount of $1,143,749,696. A special revenue budget in the amount of $139,419,931. Debt service budget in the amount of $94,744,982. The capital outlay budget in the amount of $876,893,895. The internal service budget in the amount of $189,362,870. Total tentative budget, $2,444,171,374. Recommend that the Lee County School Board accept the 2023 Certification of Taxable Value for Lee County Form DR 420-S, and authorize the superintendent to complete and execute the form. Recommendation number seven, recommend that the Lee County School Board schedule a public hearing on the final 2023-2024 millage levies and the final budget for the 2023-2024 school year for Wednesday, September 6, 2023, at a specially scheduled board meeting to begin at 5:05 PM in the Lee County Public Education Center boardroom. Mr. Chair, those are the recommendations.
Thank you. At this time, the public will be invited to speak on these matters. The time allowed for comment is three minutes per speaker. Do we have anyone wishing to speak? Come forward.
That's okay. That's okay. I'll time you. I'll tell you when to start. Just give me one second.
And your start, time starts. All right. My name is Robert Daniels. As you know, I'm a teacher, and I've been coming up here for quite a while, saying that the teachers need a significant pay raise. The very first trip up here, I told you that after working in the district for a little over 10 years, I had effectively had a $150 pay raise across those 10 years, after I adjusted for inflation, and that's just assuming inflation at 2.5%, not what's gone on over the last few years. I saw the $7.5 million earmarked for teacher raises. It comes out to about 1,200 per teacher, 1,500 per teacher, depending on how many positions you manage to fill. And I'm going to suggest that the millage be raised, or attempt to raise the millage, because that amount's just simply not enough. Every single teacher you have is going to have that completely eaten and more only by house insurance rights costs. And I know you had to scramble yourselves to pay for insurance costs. I believe it was 12 million. Comes out to about half a percent of your budget. Imagine when your insurance costs were 5% of your budget, the increase alone, let alone the rest of it. I'm not sure if the millage increase could be done direct. I don't know if there's some other possibilities, perhaps passing an amendment to the prior Sals tax, where some of that could be earmarked directly towards instructional staff increases for the pay, but at this rate, we have fewer and fewer adults in our schools, and while the security upgrades are nice, it's not going to matter anywhere near as much as having a teacher in each classroom with the additional support staff to keep those students safe from each other, as well as outside threats, as we can see in District 5. Thank you.
Are there any other speakers at this time?
Good evening.
Good time. You can go ahead and start.
My name is Elaine Ponzio. I am a teacher in the school district. I am starting my 19th year. I also think that something needs to be done for other pay raises for us. As an 18-going-on-19-year teacher, if I was to go to Charlotte County, and I was a tenured teacher there, grandfathered in teacher, I'd be making $10,000 more right now than I am making here. $10,000. If I transfer there right now, as a brand-new first-year teacher in their district, I would be making the same exact amount of money I'm making. Your teachers are struggling. We cannot afford to live here. We have teachers that are saying that they are moving because they cannot afford to live here. The prices are going up, and I know that you want to get quality- The prices are going up, and I know that you want to get quality teachers, and I know that you're going to other countries to get teachers, to get them, because we are so shorthanded. But you also need to take care of your teachers that are here. We're the ones that are here year after year, and we're the ones that are training these new teachers. We mentor them, the apples program, the after-school programs, the tutoring, their lessons, everything that we have to do. We are teaching these new teachers, and they're making only a couple dollars less than us. We are tired. I love teaching. I've been a PE teacher till I got injured. I was a math and science teacher, a science resource teacher. Now I'm going back to math, because I do what's necessary, because I love my kids out in Lee High Zone, and that is a struggling zone. I am a teacher, and I'm proud to be one, but you could give money to everybody else in those $30,000, $40,000 raises to get quality people to come in here. What about us? Please consider us. Thank you.
Anyone else wishing public comment at this time? Seeing none, I will now close this public hearing and reconvene the special school board meeting of July 31st, 2023. Time is 5:31. The board will now consider each of the superintendent's recommendations. Dr. Banier, please restate your recommendations individually, allowing the board the opportunity to vote before moving on to the next one.
Mr. Chair, members of the board, members of the public, recommendation number one. The recommendation is that the Lee County School Board adopt the 2023-2024 tentative proposed required local effort millage of 3.182 mils, with a proposed amount to be raised The required local effort or RLE millage includes basic RLE of 3.164, and a prior adjustment millage of .018.
Board members, you have heard the superintendent's recommendation. Is there a motion to approve? Ms. Morgan?
I move we adopt the superintendent's recommendation that the Lee County School Board adopt the 2023-24 tentative proposed required local effort millage of 3.182 mils.
Is there a second? Mr. Fisher? Is there any discussion? Thank you. It's not showing up on our screen there. Dr. Banier, recommendation number two, please.
Recommendation number two is a recommendation of the Lee County School Board adopt the 2023-2024 tentative proposed basic discretionary millage of .748 mils, with a proposed amount to be raised of $104,183,495.
Board members, you have heard the superintendent's recommendation. Is there a motion to approve?
I move that we adopt the superintendent's recommendation that the Lee County School Board adopt the 2023-2024 tentative proposed basic discretionary millage of .748 mils.
Is there a second? Mr. Fisher?
Second.
Please record, any discussion, I'm sorry. Motion passes 5-0. I can see it up there now. Dr. Banier, your next recommendation?
Recommendation number three, the recommendation is that the Lee County School Board adopt the 2023-2024 tentative proposed capital outlay millage of 1.500, with a proposed amount to be raised of $208,924,120. The total millage will equal 5.43 mils, with the total amount to be raised equalling $756,305,316. Total millage rate will be levied, to be levied, is more than the rollback rate. It is an increase of the rollback rate from 11.17%.
Board members, you have heard the superintendent's recommendation. Is there a motion to approve?
I, I recommend that the Lee County School Board adopt the 2023-2024 tentative proposed capital outlay millage of 1.500 mils.
Is there a second? Ms. Langford Fleming? Any discussion? Motion carries 5-0. Dr. Banier, would you please read your next recommendation?
Recommendation number four, the recommendation is that the Lee County School Board adopt the resolution determining revenues and the millage levies, and the resolution adopting a tentative millage rates. I'm sorry, I'm going to go back and do that again. Recommendation number four, recommendation that the Lee County School Board adopt the resolution determining revenues and millage levies, and the resolution adopting the tentative millage rates for the fiscal year 2023-2024.
Board members, you have heard the superintendent's recommendation. Is there a motion to approve? Mr. Fisher?
I have the microphone one of these days. Motion to approve the superintendent, superintendent's recommendation that the Lee County School Board adopt the resolution determining revenues and millages levied, and the resolution adopting tentative millage rates for the fiscal year 2023 and 2024.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Ms. Morgan? Do you second it? Any discussion? Motion carries 5-0. Chair, would you please read your next recommendation?
Mr. Chair, members of the board, members of the public, recommendation number five, the recommendation is that the Lee County School Board adopt the tentative budget and related resolution adopting the tentative budget for the 2023-2024 school year as follows. General operating in the amount of $1,143,749,696. Special revenue budget in the amount of $139,419,931. Debt service budget in the amount of $94,744,982. The capital outlay budget in the amount of $876,893,895. The internal service budget in the amount of $189,362,870. Total tentative budget equals $2,444,171,374.
Board members, you have heard the superintendent's recommendation. Is there a motion to approve? Mr. Fisher?
Motion to approve superintendent's recommendation that the Lee County School Board adopt the tentative budget and the related resolution adopting tentative budget for the 2023-2024 school year as follows, based upon the numbers listed, as well as the superintendent gave.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Ms. Langford Fleming? Any discussion? Motion carries 5-0. Recommendation number six.
Mr. Chair, members of the board, members of the public, recommendation six is to recommend that the Lee County School Board accept the 2023 certification of taxable value for Lee County Form DR 420-S, and authorize the superintendent to complete and execute the form.
Thank you. Board members, you have heard the superintendent's recommendation. Is there a motion to approve? Mr. Fisher?
Motion to approve superintendent's recommendation that the Lee County School Board accept the 2023 certification of taxable value for Lee County Form DR 42, 420-S, and authorize the superintendent to complete and execute the form.
Thank you. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Ms. Morgan? Any discussion? Motion carries 5-0. Dr. Banier, would you please read your next recommendation?
Mr. Chair, members of the board, members of the public, recommendation number seven, which is the final recommendation, we recommend that the Lee County School Board schedule a public hearing on the final 2023-2024 millage levies, and the final budget for the 2023-2024 school year for Wednesday, September 6th, 2023, at a specially scheduled board meeting to begin at 5:05 PM in the Lee County Public Education Center boardroom.
Board members, you have heard the superintendent's recommendation. Is there a motion to approve?
I motion to, sorry. I motion to approve the recommendation that the Lee County School Board schedule a public hearing on the final 23-24 millage levies, and the final budget for 23-24 school year for that Wednesday, September 6th, 2023, and a specially scheduled board meeting beginning at 5:05.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Mrs. Giovinelli? Any discussion? Motion carries 5-0. Next on the agenda are comments from board members, board attorney, and the superintendent. Mr. Fisher?
Just briefly want to reiterate, as the last two meetings, I want to make sure that our administration continues to look into dollars in the operating budget for teachers and staff. Thank you.
Mrs. Giovinelli?
And I want to echo what Mr. Fisher said. I brought it up this afternoon. I think it's really important that we really focus on raising salaries for teachers, as well as staff, as well as bus drivers. I feel like they're underpaid, and I don't feel like it is. I know they are. And so, we got to do something. We got to do better, and I'm committed to do that. Thank you.
Ms. Fleming?
I agree with the previous comments this afternoon that we've heard. As a former educator, I know that at times, it can be a thankless job, and I appreciate all that you do. It's not just the 10 months that you're in the building. It's the, a whole year job, and I understand that. And we, as a board, need to make sure that we are taking care of our staff, educators, and school administrators, as well as our bus drivers and other members of staff. So I am, I'm giving myself that challenge this coming year.
Ms. Morgan?
So I, I think it's important to clarify that the salary increase of $7.5 million is not a prospective salary increase. The other thing that I would say is that we cannot raise the millage. The state tells us what our millage will be, and you are correct that the only way we could raise the millage would be if we were to go out for a public referendum. Those are my comments. Thank you.
Thank you for clarifying that. I was going to say the same thing.
Okay.
And I do agree with my other board members that all the employees of the district, we need to do as much as we can for them. Mr. Assistant Prey Bruno, do you have any?
No, I do not, Mr. Chairman. Thank you.
Dr. Banier?
No other comments, other than the same message received. Thank you.
Thank you. At this point, having no other business to come before this body, seeing no objection, this meeting is adjourned. The time is 5:46 PM.